I'd like to welcome all of you to the Westlake Revelations League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for the Los Virginas Unified School District Board of Education. Would everybody please rise so we can do a pledge of allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a Boy Scout, I always want to go "two" at the end of that, but that doesn't quite work. My name is Neil Ticton, and I am the founder of Westlake Revelations and the moderator for tonight's debate. The League of Women Voters and Westlake Revelations have once again joined together to bring you this event, and we have another one on Monday night for the Westlake Village City Council Candidates. Westlake Revelations, for those of you that don't know, is a newsletter that covers issues relevant to Westlake Village and the surrounding areas. Revelation's mantra is "Just the facts without opinion," and I do this simply as my contribution to the community. As a matter of disclosure, in regards to the Los Virginas Unified School District, I led the creation of the technology strategy for the school district several years ago. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization open to both men and women of voting age. This means they do not support nor oppose any political party or any candidate for that matter. Joining the League gives you an opportunity to support informed and active participation in government while having a lot of fun and meeting some great people. We're fortunate tonight to have both Roz Tyson and her colleague Dottie Antelman, who are back here in the back of the room, from the League, and I encourage you to talk to them a little later on tonight and ask them questions about the League and joining the League and all that they have to offer. If you are watching this on video later on, you can see more information about the League of Women Voters at www.lwvlosangeles.org, and you can see the unbiased election information at the league's smartvoter.org website. A huge thank you to Dr. Stepanowski and his team and all of the LVUSD staff for hosting us tonight, and the city of Calabasas for taking care of the video and getting that up on the web and editing it, and we really appreciate that. We also want to thank Abby's Mill House Bakery for providing some really yummy cookies back there, and there's coffee around the corner as who. And a special thank you to Emily Fisher over here, who has been helping me out through this entire event. She's a student at Agoura High earning her service hours for graduation. And one more group that was hugely tolerant and is always tolerant of me, and that is my family. My wife is here somewhere, but she's disappeared at the moment. There she is over there. I'd say thank you. The goal of tonight is to have a structured, even-handed presentation of what board candidates think on a variety of topics that the community considers to be the most important issues. There are five candidates running for three positions: one incumbent and four challengers. Now onto the debate. A quick review of the rules, which the candidates have all agreed to. Each candidate will have a three-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. If they go shorter, we can cover extra questions, and if they go longer, they're going to get cut off, but they know that. The candidates have chosen numbers out of a hat to determine the random order, and we have a series of questions submitted by the public and have been culled and pressed together so that we can present them in a uniform way to all of the candidates. I'll be asking them on behalf of the community, and we worked hard to make sure that the questions that the community members told us they wanted to hear most were the ones that we selected. In general, a board member is expected to carefully research and consider their decisions, and so to best reflect that, we gave all the candidates a list of most of the questions that we'll be asking about tonight, so they have a chance to investigate each and consider their answers. But we also might have a couple of questions at the end if we have time. That doesn't mean you should go long. Most of the questions will get one-minute answers; some will get some 30-second answers. We'll rotate the start position, and there's a random order for the very end on the closing statement. The candidates have a monitor in front of them to tell them when they are out of time. You can see another monitor of this over here. When it starts flashing, that means that they're out of time. And because they know the questions in advance and they've had time to consider the answers, we're going to be really strict on time, and I might need to cut them off. Enough of the rules, except for one more thing. Each of these candidates is our neighbor. Essentially, this position, while elected, is a volunteer position, and in short, they deserve our respect not only for running and giving of their time, but also as we answer and answer these questions. Our first candidate to speak on his opening statement is Leslie, her opening statement. So, Les-
Yes, start.
You may start.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Westlake Revelations, and Neil Ticton and everyone here tonight for participating in this very important election. As a current school board member, it has been an honor to serve our community these past four years. Thank you for your trust in the Board of Education as we strive to deliver a high-quality education. I'm excited to seek a second term. My experience on the school board and a proven record of leadership is essential at this time of great change. School districts across the state of California are facing sweeping education reform with the new Common Core standards and a new funding model. I'm the only incumbent seeking reelection, as two longtime and well-respected members are retiring. With two new board members filling the vacant seats, LVUSD will need experienced, dedicated board members to help move the district through the challenges. We need board members who have knowledge of the details of the issues and an eye to the future. My depth of understanding of the culture and values of our communities and schools is fundamental to asking strategic questions and making thoughtful, informed decisions. My extensive LVUSD experience at each school level, community involvement, as well as my professional business management background in negotiations, contracts, budgets, and insurance helped prepare me to serve as a highly effective member of the school board. I am a graduate of the California School Board Association's Masters in Governance Program, and I served on the Executive Board of the Ventura County School Board Association. Going forward, my goals include: supporting the district in its focus to fully implement the Common Core standards; ensuring our teachers and schools have the necessary support; continuing to educate our community and parents about Common Core; providing experienced fiscal oversight; and prioritize a budget based on a complicated new funding formula. Monitoring advancements and emerging academic trends is always a must; focusing on facility needs, taking into consideration programs and enrollment trends; and continuing to expand technology in the classroom and district-wide. We need to expand community and business partnerships as well. These are just a few of my priorities for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Dallas?
Thank you. I would like to start by also thanking the League of Women Voters and Neil Ticton and the Westlake Revelations for hosting us this evening. I'm running for the school board as a former director for the United States Department of Education, a teacher at the University of Southern California, a former U.S. naval officer, the current chief of corporate affairs for Mattel, with experience setting budgets, leading teams, and managing strategic priorities. I'm also, most importantly, running as the father of two young daughters, who have their entire educational journey still ahead of them in our district. They are my special interest. They're the reason why I'm sitting up here tonight, to ensure the opportunities afforded the previous generation are still there for my children and children in future generations to come. My family moved to this community several years ago for many of the same reasons that you all came here. The primary reason being our amazing school system. It was the driving force that caused us to move here, and it's why we love this community. And while we have so much to be thankful for and grateful for in this amazing district, we also must realize that we face some immense challenges in the years ahead. Common Core is going to evolutionize how we teach, how we test, and how we measure performance. Our funding in this issue is a serious issue that every member of this district must be aware of. Constricting enrollments, restricting budgets have really squeezed us from both ends. Over the last six years, the impact has been $11 million annually to our district in losses, or about $1,000 per student. And despite our best efforts to cut and bring fiscal management, we are still running annual multimillion-dollar deficits. Deficits that current projections show in five years will wipe out our reserves entirely. In 48 months, unless we have serious change and huge increases in funding, we will fall below the state-mandated 3% reserve level for our district. Our teachers also face a significant funding gap. We are a top-2% performing district, yet our teachers are in the bottom half in pay. This is not sustainable as we look to the future. As we look to compete and recruit the best teachers from around the country, who can make 25% or 30% more in California and other districts, this gap must be addressed. Lastly, as a technology native, one of my core issues, and we're going to get a chance to talk about it today, is bringing a true integrated technology perspective to our district. This goes way beyond Wi-Fi campuses and devices, as we're seeing in Los Angeles, and actually looks at how we're integrating technology into our curriculum, training our teachers, and preparing our students. I want to end where I begin. Los Virginas is an amazing district, with dedicated teachers, committed parents, and a very hopeful future. To ensure we can deliver on that future, we need leaders with experience managing complex budgets, setting priorities, and leading. Leaders who understand that the role of the school board is not to micromanage individual school decisions or be intricately involved in the day-to-day operations of individual campuses, but to set strategic priorities, hold the district accountable, manage its $95-million budget, and help guide its workforce, the largest in the district. I believe my experience in government, the military, and the classroom, and the private sector uniquely qualifies me to serve. Thank you.
Angela?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, Westlake Revelations, and Los Virginas Unified School District for hosting us tonight. My name is Angela Cutbill, and I have been a resident of this district and this community for 20 years. I was raised in the Midwest, and my previous work experience includes the Kansas Secretary of State's office, where I ran the Legislative Affairs Office, and the United States Senate Finance Committee staff in Washington, D.C. I went to the United Kingdom to do my graduate degree in post-war European Economic Reconstruction, and I met my husband over there. While I lived in England, I worked for a government relations firm where I handled the privatization of the electricity and water industries for Her Majesty's government. I also worked in the House of Commons doing a number of things largely focused on European Community Trade Law. My family and I moved here in 1993, like most of you, for the schools, for this specific district. I have three children who have attended our schools from kindergarten on. My sons are in college, and my daughter is a student at Agoura High School. I have been a volunteer in this district for 17 years. For 12 years, I have been a PFA president at all levels: elementary, middle, and high school. I've sat on many district and school committees over the years: budgets, sites, building committees, accreditation committees. One of the great things about being a PFA president in this district is that you're involved in a very real district-wide way. We're brought together where we're briefed on things like the state budget, our budget, changes in education. I went into my first year as a PFA president in 2001 largely to address the Yerba Buena Building Project, but I quickly saw the bigger picture. What a difference being involved made in our children's schools, in our children's lives. You add terrific teachers and staff to that mix. How can you not look upon that and want to do everything you can? I certainly felt that way. My goals are to maintain our high quality of education and expand on it in tough times; to utilize our funds for their maximum impact; to take advantage of technology in ways that our kids get the best education; and to maintain good relations with our wider communities. I'm proud of my history in this district, and I'm pleased to be endorsed by our teachers, many leaders, and parents, which I think speaks to my longtime involvement in this community. I see the big picture. I understand fiscal responsibility, and I want what's best for our kids. I've worked in government, and I've worked in this district. I've served through many different projects. I've done many things except serving on the board, and I'd like to do that for you now.
Mary Jo?
Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, Neil Ticton, and our school district for giving us this opportunity to address our community. I was raised in New York State, where I graduated magna cum laude from the University of Buffalo. I have been passionate about education my entire life. As a child, I loved school and the library, and I still do. My service in my son's schools began at their co-op nursery school in San Mateo, California, where I served on the Executive Board. When they entered Baywood Elementary School, I served on the PTA boards, where I gained invaluable educational training and knowledge working with budgets while attending annual PTA convention and serving as PTA presidents. After moving to this area in 1994, I served on the executive boards of the PFCs, six years as president. I have served on many district committees. I've chaired two election campaigns for our district, was the WASP Accreditation Chair at Calabasas High School, served on school site and curriculum councils, and worked on multiple distinguished school applications. For the past nine and a half years, I have worked at AE Wright, running the Media Center for the last four years. I have loved working with the students, encouraging a love of reading and teaching them research skills, two things that are critical for their educational development, especially in current times. As a community leader and district employee, I have built strong relationships and earned the respect and trust of our staff and community. I know how to listen to others and work together to find solutions. My goals, if elected, are: it is essential that we continue to emphasize options and new programs for our students. Programs like LSTEM, Dual Immersion, the International Back Laureate, and the Media Academy enrich the learning experience and help us to maintain and attract students. We need to continue to prepare our staff for Common Core, maintain a focus on technology. We must adopt a fiscally responsible budget while maintaining quality programs and advocate for low class size. We must grow the foundation. I was part of the Alternative Revenue Generating Committee from which the foundation was formed. I see the need to continue the growth that the foundation has started. We must strengthen our relationships with our cities, our local businesses, and our community members to move us to the next level in fundraising. As a community, we all benefit from the excellent reputation of our schools. Thank you.
Ray?
Hi. My name is Ray Pearl, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Thank you to Westlake Revelations and Neil Ticton and the League of Women Voters for hosting us. I am running for the school board because of my passion for education and my belief in the Los Virginas Unified School District. A top-notch school board should have a diverse group of people serving our community. I am the only candidate in this election who has three children currently enrolled in our district: a second, fifth, and eighth grader. Next year, I will have a child in elementary, middle, and high school, and my youngest won't graduate from Agoura High School until 2024. I am the only candidate who can tell you what is happening in multiple classrooms right now because of my time on campus interacting with teachers, administrators, parents, and children. There's nothing wrong with being a brand-new parent to our district or one who has children that have gone all the way through our schools. I do think it would be a loss to finish this election without a current LVSD parent on the school board. I have a long record of service to our community. My wife, Tara, and I moved to Westlake Village in 1998 because we wanted to put down our family roots in the community she grew up in. I am entering my fifth year on the White Oak Elementary School PFC, and I just finished serving two years as the first dad president of our PFC. Additionally, I am a founding board member of the Foundation for Los Virginas Schools. I am proud to be working hard as a current board member with a wonderful group of volunteers raising money for our entire Unified School District. While others might have a plan or a thought about raising private money to support our public schools, I am already doing it and have been for three years. Finally, I have been coaching AYSO for the past six years and cherish the role of coach in the lives of children in our community. My education and work experience also set me apart from other candidates. I have a bachelor's degree from UCLA, a master's in public administration from the University of Washington. I am also a former active-duty naval officer, serving on a ship homeported out of Long Beach, California, in Bremerton, Washington. My current job, located in Agoura Hills, is as the Executive Director of the California Housing Consortium, a nonprofit organization that advocates for affordable housing statewide. As the Executive Director, my job is very similar to our district superintendent Dan Stepanowski's. His only luxury is having a board of five people, while I work with a board of 22. This means, like Dan, it can never be my way or the highway. I have to be a consensus builder and a leader. I must listen, guide, and lead, but always recognize that collaboration is much better than issuing a mandate. I must be open, transparent, and available in order to succeed in my job. My job also has me spending a lot of time working with our state government leaders in Sacramento. Part of the job of a board member is leadership and advocacy on the state level for our district. I believe this is an area where the district can improve with my leadership on the board. I work well with both sides of the aisle, as evidenced by my endorsements from Jeff Gurrell and Bob Hertzberg, and know how Sacramento works. I see the red light now. I would be honored to have your support. Thank you.
Okay. That was the easy part. I'm just kidding. But we now are going to listen to a whole series of questions and answers. The answers are going to either be one minute or 30 seconds. If you have no idea how difficult that is to actually answer a question in one minute or 30 seconds, you're about to see some people try. So I... We do have one sitting board member. There may be some questions that she's unable to answer, if it's anything that is before the board or about to come before the board, and she will tell you that if that's the case. This is a 62nd question. First question up goes to Dallas. LVUSD offers a range of alternative programs, some of which serve a small percentage of the student population. Do you feel these programs benefit our students overall, or should funds used to support these programs be utilized in other ways?
It's a great question. Thank you. I think part of what makes our district so amazing and special is the diversity of our offerings. My family is the benefactor of that, as we've chosen to have our kindergartner attend Mariposa, which is an amazing and special and different offering that this school district has that really sets us apart from the region. In tight budget times, though, we do need to look at each program individually, and I think it should continue to be a great source of pride for us, that we have diverse programs in theater arts, language immersion programs, unique campus communities that have the ability to innovate locally for things that work for them. But a continuing thread you're going to hear me return to today is the following: to be able to offer these programs and have this ability to diversify, we must get our finances in order. We cannot have these programs if we have $2 million deficits year over year. This is a prime reason why I'm running, so that not only that my daughter now gets to benefit from these programs, but other kids five, 10, 15 years down the line, and we can continue to innovate and invest in new programs. The budget is the single biggest issue facing this district going forward.
Angela?
You know, the measure of a program is not judged by the numbers alone, particularly in education. It doesn't give you the whole story. I love the adaptability of our district and the way some of these programs are there, and it shows how we're responsive in meeting the needs of many students. And many of these programs are actually self-supporting, and some even bring revenue in. So to say they're all a loss is incorrect. And the beautiful thing about programs like these is that we get to see the effects of different kinds of learning on different kinds of kids. We can then perhaps look at those programs, bring across best practices to other populations, so that other programs are enriched as well. I think there's tremendous benefit in some of these programs we offer.
Mary Jo?
Challenges often lead to opportunities. With declining enrollment, we have seen an increase of options and new programming for our students. These programs help us to maintain and attract new students and stable our enrollment for the district. We offer a variety of programs to meet the many students that we serve. Some are small by nature, and some are small because they're located at only one school site. And as Angela said, not all are costly. Some bring in revenue, such as the Los Virginas Academy, which brings in daily ADA for our district. Some receive grant money, like the Media Academy at Calabasas High School. Calabasas is currently applying for another grant to fund a STEAM program. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math. Robotics, Chinese, nonfiction writing, Dual Immersion, LSTEM, International Back Laureate. These are programs we want to prepare our students for the global world.
Okay. I'm going to be harsher on cutting you guys off.
Sorry.
Ray?
If we are to maintain our district's excellence and work hard to achieve greatness, we need to provide options for our students and families. We should never be a one-size-fits-all district. Alternative programs like the IB program, the LSTEM program, homeschooling through the Los Virginas Academy, or Mariposa allow our district to say yes to those who are looking for something less traditional. If we didn't offer alternatives, someone else would, and our district would be faced with even steeper declining enrollment. Obviously, it is incumbent upon the board to allocate our taxpayer investment wisely. We can't invest in every new idea or every new program, but we can invest in as many as are feasible and financially prudent. As a new board member with a budgeting background, I will make sure not to accept the business's usual mantra, but I also believe providing options beyond a traditional education only helps increase our district's success.
Leslie?
As the only sitting board member who has approved and adopted new programs, I can tell you, I can ensure you, that the budget is part of the process. We, as a board, have to look at the big picture. The big picture is this: declining enrollment, we need to attract students and families to move into our area. We look to offer programs that students and families want. We always balance permits, that's another question, but we are attracting students. We do take into the budget consideration, and generally speaking, I don't want to say always, there's minimal budget impacts to these. These programs are funded largely by minimal support from the district, PFAs, and grants. The budget is something that we do look at, and many of these programs do bring in students, which bring in money, like the Los Virginas Academy. So I want you to know that that is something that we already regularly do when we're looking to provide new programs. Thank you.
So the next question is a 62nd question. The first person up is Angela. What do you want this district to look like five years from now, and how do we get there?
I'd like us to remain a destination district, a district where people want to come. I want us to be in the top 2%, if not even better, whatever the economy looks like. I want this to be a place where teachers still want to come and work. I want it to be a place of student achievement. I think we get there by staying the course of site-based decision-making, by being adaptable, by creating and growing our technology platform, and by using our funds wisely, adapting to change along the way. And I think it's an interesting question, because I think this is less about the board's vision, but about our ability to create an educational climate to empower our staff to be visionary, where students and teachers can do their very best work.
Mary Jo?
In five years, we will see Common Core fully implemented. We will see much more collaboration in our classrooms, students performing in the D quadrant, where there is more critical thinking, and they are applying their knowledge and skills. We'll see inverted classrooms, where the teacher in class has time for more individual attention for her students. We will continue to see more options and new programs for our students. More emphasis on using technology in the classroom, using it responsibly to enhance the learning experience. How do we get there? By training our staff, educating our parents and students, engaging our cities, businesses, and communities, so we can work together to bring in the necessary funding to achieve these goals.
Thank you. Ray?
I want this district to be more open, more transparent, more responsive to students' needs, and more inclusive of community input. I want us to invest more in technology, and I want us to be a strong leader in the implementation of Common Core. I also want to ensure that we increase our funding streams to more than just allocating resources from Sacramento and Washington, D.C., and our local parcel tax. As a founding and current board member of the Foundation, I have worked with a wonderful group of volunteers to begin making a real impact at all of our schools. The Foundation has raised over $500,000 in just two years to help with class size reduction, as well as returning counseling to all of our schools, and we have only just begun to scratch the surface. While others running for the school board have talked about finding funding alternatives, I have been at the forefront of actually doing it. We need to strengthen the district's relationship with the Foundation and move to a centralized funding model for our Unified School District that is the hallmark of all successful education foundations. While I understand that this will be a culture change for our district, this will lessen the burden on our PFC, PFA groups to fund specialist salaries.
Leslie?
Thank you. My vision is that Common Core will be fully implemented- My vision is that Common Core will be fully implemented. We will have adopted curriculum and new textbooks, which is something we really need. We will have increased options and opportunities with digital learning. We will have new course choices at the secondary level. And how we're going to get there? We're going to spend the next couple of years looking at reviewing the courses that are available, the A through G courses, researching other schools, other districts, other states, colleges, student learning and achievement. We're going to work and continue to work on closing that achievement gap. More data, more tech, data analysis, data-driven informing education. We're going to utilize the lecture halls at the Performing Arts Centers to prepare students for college classes. We're going to have cross-curricular lessons, teachers and classes working together, history and English, math and science. That's my view for the next few years.
I hope that our district continues to be a beacon for families who want to have an outstanding educational environment, and we're going to get there if we work together. This is not theoretical for me. As one of only two candidates sitting on this day as today who will have kids in our schools next year, let alone in five years, this is a reality for my family. This is the single most important issue facing us today. We need to make sure that our district has the resources, not just to keep the lights on, but to continually invest in our schools going forward. We do have some serious issues. I've put together a plan. I'm the only candidate up here that's actually articulated a clear plan for tackling our budget issues. You can turn to page five of the Acorn or go to my website at DallasLawrence.com to see it. We must tackle this from a two-pronged effort that grows resources. I have extensive experience as a fundraiser. I run a $22 million nonprofit foundation, but also looks to find new ways to bring revenue into the district through addressing our attrition rates and redoubling our efforts to make sure the families who are here continue to invest and want to stay in this district.
Okay. Our next question is a 30-second question. So you thought 60 was fast. Now again, 30. First one up on this is Mary Jo, and the question is: what do you believe the role of an LVUSD board member is? If elected, how will you balance your current time commitments and positions with responsibilities of a board member?
Everything the board strives for is aimed at increasing student achievement and preparing students to succeed in the real world. The board sets direction and vision for the district. The staff implements that vision. Board makes sure that the staff has the tools necessary to succeed. If elected, I will give a full-time commitment to my service on the board and will be available whenever needed. I will be available for training, such as Masters of Governance, and I will give 150% as I have done in all my work for the district.
Ray.
A board member's role is to be a voice for our children and the community, set policy for the district's professional staff, provide fiscal oversight for the district's budget, and to advocate for the district at the local, state, and national level. Having previously worked full-time while being the PFC president at White Oak, a board member of the Foundation, all while coaching AYSO, I know how to manage my time, and I am confident that I can meet my new responsibilities. I also believe a well-rounded board member will not be doing this job full-time. Board members provide leadership and guidance, but do not need to over-manage staff.
Leslie.
Thank you. The main role of the board is governance and setting policy based on mandates of the law and priorities of the community. So to understand the priorities of the community and to best serve our community, board members must fully understand the values of our community and the culture of each school site, and this takes time to do it. As the sitting board member, we have committee meetings, we have study sessions, and we visit schools. This is all during the workday. We do community outreach, and there's nighttime activities.
Thank you. Dallas.
I believe the role of the board is threefold. It is to set smart policy, it is to champion that policy, and it is to hold the superintendent accountable for that policy. It is not a full-time job. In fact, it is mandated by the State of California's Constitution on how it gets paid, so that it is not a full-time job. So this is a job where you want somebody with experience managing multimillion-dollar budgets, experience hiring and, when necessary, firing employees, and setting strategic policy objectives as we move forward. I firmly believe that my experience in the government, the private sector, and the classroom more than qualifies me for the time requirement here.
Angela.
The board really does two things. They provide leadership to set policy, and they set expectations for the superintendent. I have the time to devote to this. I think there's a big difference between being engaged and over-involved. I think the reality is, we live in a community that wants its leaders, that wants its school board members to be accessible, to be on the ground, to be understanding what's happening in the classroom and at the school sites, so that they can translate that to policy.
The next question is another 30-second question. First person to answer is going to be Ray. In the next couple of years, the current parcel tax will expire. Two-part question. Do you support a renewal of Measure E as it stands now, the parcel tax? Or do you support, and do you support, expanding the parcel tax?
The expiring parcel tax, if not renewed, will add a $2 million-plus hole to the district's budget. I believe a new parcel tax has the potential to have a significantly positive impact on our children's education. In any successful parcel tax election, community involvement, polling, and buy-in is critical. That's where we need to start. As a school board member, it would be my responsibility to ensure we are using our current taxpayer investment wisely before we can ask for more. Assuming that we are, I would support a renewal of Measure E and would be willing to investigate expanding the parcel tax, assuming once again that the community is behind this effort.
Thank you. Leslie.
I have a proven record of support of parcel tax, because it is the fiduciary responsibility of the Board of Education to explore all options to bring in additional revenue. Again, I agree with polling. Before I would put this on the ballot, I would want to gauge the public's support for renewal and extension.
Dallas.
I'm proud that our community stepped up to close our funding gap with the passage. We received twice the local funding and half the federal funding of most school districts in California. But to be very candid, I think it's irresponsible to take a position theoretically two years out on a potential tax when I don't know the budget realities or where the district will stand. My hope is that we will have closed the multimillion-dollar funding gap that's impacting our district, and we won't need an extension of the parcel tax. But the reality also is, as a board member, I'd be open to considering that if in two years the budget realities are not where I hope they would be.
Angela.
Yes, I supported the parcel tax, and I worked for it. I've supported every measure. This district has floated in 20 years because they've always demonstrated to me that the money is for here and stays here. As far as expanding it, we'll have to look at that time at two things: what the community is willing to do and what the community wants. But the parcel tax is a terrific measure, because it gives us local control and oversight committee on spending, and the money stays here and does not go to Sacramento.
So we have no idea if we timed that one right, but we think we're okay. Mary Jo.
I chaired the last Measure E campaign, where we garnered a 78% voter approval. Measure E brings in $2 million that is needed in our schools for a cost of $98 a year per parcel with an exemption for seniors. It is not a tax increase, but a renewal of an existing tax. Before supporting an expansion of the existing tax, I would have to see significant proof that our community would support that increase.
Thank you. So I gave you a few extra seconds because of the microphone thing at the beginning.
Yeah.
No worries. 60 seconds is the next question. And the first person up is going to be Leslie. Most of us have heard about Common Core, and there's a lot packed into that one phrase. How would you explain Common Core to someone in the community who doesn't know what it is?
Thank you. The purpose is to better prepare our students to compete in a global society. The new standards are based on literacy, reading and writing, writing across curriculum. More writing is always good. Less standards, which allows for teachers to delve deeper, which will allow for critical and higher-level thinking. Teach the skills necessary to be successful in college and career. The skills revolve around critical thinking, problem-solving, creativity, and collaboration. Common Core standards will provide an opportunity to compare achievement across the nation. A student moving from across the country to any elementary school in Los Virginas, a fourth grader, will be able to fit in and transition easier with Common Core standards.
Dallas.
Common Core is the education law of the land, and the role of our board now that the standards are set, the budget is allocated, and the testing is picked, is to champion its successful implementation and bring our entire community along in this process. Common Core, as I said, is an evolutionary change in how we teach, how we test, and how we measure. And what we must do now is lead our community along in this educational campaign, reaching everyone from the real estate agents that leverage our district's scores for home values to new parents considering moving here to existing parents who have not heard about this Common Core reform. And here is why this is important: test scores traditionally go down when Common Core is implemented, because we are changing how we benchmark. We're no longer judging against Compton and Camarillo. We're looking at Connecticut and Beijing and making sure that our students can compete globally. It is critical that we lead a top-down education and bottom-up education effort in our community to make sure everyone is ready and understands these changes, and we have the breathing room necessary for our teachers, our district, and our parents to ensure their successful implementation.
Angela.
Common Core is simply the next generation of K-12 standards that are going to compare us nationally and on a global level. They're designed to prepare our students to participate in a world economy. There's a universal assessment system that's based on those common standards. It requires more critical thinking. It requires more engaged learning. In some areas, like math, it goes deeper into some subjects, although not as many. It's a real-world approach to both teaching and learning. I've done some samples of taking some of the next-generation assessments myself, and I was very energized by them. I found that they required me to think along the way, they required me to go back, work on my answers, and they engaged me in a way that traditional tests don't.
Mary Jo.
Teachers and schools across California have been preparing for the last few years for Common Core state standards, which will bring major changes in classroom instruction. The standards are designed to teach critical thinking skills and evidence-based reasoning that are relevant in the real world, preparing them with skills that will help them be successful in college and their careers. Students will read more nonfiction than fiction and be responsible for a new level of complexity. Students will be expected to read and write across the curriculum and all subjects. They will write to persuade and explain. Students will be expected to work and discuss collaboratively. Students will need to utilize technology research skills. In high school math, subjects like algebra, geometry, and trigonometry will be taught, emphasizing their connection to one another.
Thank you. And Ray.
Common Core state standards are an attempt to focus learning on relevant, real-world topics in order to provide our students the knowledge and skills they need to succeed in college and careers in a global economy. California is one of 45 states that have embraced the implementation of this new learning paradigm. To me, that is fancy talk for education reform that moves us away from simple right-and-wrong answers and memorization to a higher level of critical thinking, in-depth exploration of issues, and embracing technology in the classroom. We will be allowing our children and our teachers the ability to grow and feel successful. Instead of a system based only on passing or failing, with Common Core, we are creating a trusting educational environment where a child's skill set can change and improve over time. As we have seen over the past 15 years, there are jobs that will exist when our freshmen graduate that simply do not exist today. We need to prepare them and ensure that their mastery of educational topics is rigorous, relevant, and with a deeper understanding and connection to what comes after 12th grade.
Okay. The 30-second follow-on question. First person to start is going to be Dallas. Do you believe Common Core provides a positive direction for our district, and why? For you, what is the most exciting part of Common Core?
Without a doubt, for me as a parent, the most exciting part about Common Core is the global benchmarking. As a parent that's concerned about my daughter's ability to compete globally in the future, it is a breath of fresh air to know that, for the first time, we will know how our school and our students stack up against the best and brightest in America, and how our schools in this country stack up against the best and brightest from around the world. It is absolutely critical. We want our kids to be able to compete in college with the best and brightest who they're going to be in school with, as well as out of school in the workplace.
Angela.
Yes, I think we've been caught in an old system where we were teaching facts for kids to return back to us. The teachers didn't like it, the kids were bored by it. By definition, anything that engages our children and interests them is better. There's greater problem-solving, greater teamwork, greater critical thinking. These are all skills they need. I particularly like the focus on more nonfiction critical analysis in the Common Core standards.
Mary Jo.
I think any program that asks students for deeper thinking and to question more is positive. It aims to prepare students with real-world skills to compete in a global economy. It teaches collaboration, which is absolutely necessary in life. It aims to teach them to write persuasively, to explain their meaning. And as someone who has been working to teach her students research skills for the past nine and a half years, I applaud any program that will encourage that.
And Ray.
I believe that Common Core does provide a positive direction for our district, because it stresses innovation, depth of knowledge, and technology, and moves away from memorization, textbooks, 15-year-old worksheets, and simply right-or-wrong answers. This is a state mandate, and our district's ability to embrace it will either make us a leader or a follower. The thing that excites me the most is how students will be learning with technology and being tested individually on their depth of knowledge. The new assessments will be useful to the teachers and students that are currently in class together and won't be a snapshot of what happened last year.
And Leslie.
Thank you. Common Core is an extension of what is already going on in our classrooms, what teachers are teaching. Teachers are teaching the skills, critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills. They're teaching our students to be collaborators. These are the skills that students and adults need in the world to be successful. So it's a natural evolution of where we've been, where we're going, and we need our children to compete on a national and an international level. So I'm thrilled and excited. I'm the most thrilled about the writing cross-curriculum, because we know when our children leave and go to college and beyond, they need to be able to write. Thank you.
The next question is a 62nd question, and the first person up is Angela, and the question is: as a member of a representative board, how do you feel about your experience, or how do you feel your experience, knowledge, and talents can benefit the students of the district? Feel free to include what you have learned from your time spent in the district, as well as your non-district experience.
I've worked in government at the state level, the federal level, both here and abroad. All of that time required research, listening, collaborating with different viewpoints to achieve an outcome that best served the people I was representing. I'm the only candidate that has outside-government experience and inside-the-district experience. I've learned in that time that teachers are our best students. They are continually working in this district to get better all the time. They are training, they are sharing, they are attending things like model schools. Another thing I've learned is that our students flourish when they have options and opportunities. I've worked through many building projects, site councils, things at the district level and at the site level. I've learned that there's no shortcut to the time spent on the ground learning this district.
Mary Jo.
As an employee of the district, I have worked alongside staff and students for the last nine and a half years. I understand what happens daily at a school site. I have seen what creative, passionate teachers do in their classrooms to motivate and excite their students. I have worked every day with the students, and I've learned so much about what they need. I have learned from them. I have earned the respect and trust of the staff. That trust will serve me well as a board member, especially in these times of great change that are ahead with Common Core. I have also worked on district-wide projects with all stakeholders from our district and community, from running phone banks during election campaigns, sitting on-site in curriculum councils, to searching out more ways to raise monies for our district. I understand our district's history and culture, and I am ready to serve on the board.
Thank you. Ray.
I live here, I work here, I volunteer here. My work experience and my master's degree in public administration will benefit the district and our students. First of all, I believe that at least one board member needs to be making decisions that will directly affect his own children. In the case of our current board... In the case of our current board and those running for election, we could conceivably start the next school year without a current LVUSD parent making decisions. Someone needs to be fully invested, and with a child in elementary, middle, and high school next year, that fully invested person is me. Additionally, my work experience will bring a unique perspective to the board. As the executive director of a nonprofit, the three primary tasks I engage in on a daily basis are working with my board of directors, advocating for those who are in need of affordable housing with our state-elected officials, and fundraising. In the four years I've had my job, I have helped double our annual revenue by tapping new contributors and forming relationships with foundations who invest a significant amount of money in our mission. These are skills that have made me a successful nonprofit executive and will be unique on the board.
Thank you. And Leslie.
Thank you. Well, as the only person up here who is currently serving on the school board, I have a unique perspective. As you've heard during the past four years, the board has adopted many programs to support our students, and this question really centers around the benefits for students. So this is a student-centered board. This has been, always has been. I bring that to it. Going forward, the board needs to continue to foster the climate that allows for increasing innovative options and opportunities for student learning. And as the only incumbent seeking reelection, experienced board leadership is essential at this time of great change with new board members, new standards, and a new funding model. Thank you.
And Dallas.
I think like many families in our district, my perception is as of a current parent, looking forward with the entire educational journey still ahead of me. I also believe that I offer a unique perspective as somebody who is the only candidate up here who has worked in education policy at the international, federal, state, and local level, helping to rebuild the schools in Iraq, helping to guide education policy as a director for the United States Department of Education in Washington, D.C., as a teacher at the University of Southern California's Annenberg School, right, teaching the master's course there and the program there. I also bring a business perspective and an understanding of how to manage budgets, set very clear priorities, and then hold people accountable to make sure those priorities are implemented at a district-wide perspective. I think those are kind of, those breadth of experience will bring a different and independent view to our board. They'll help make sure that our board is diverse and looking after the entirety of our community.
Thank you. Good? Next question is a 62nd question, and the first person up is going to be Mary Jo. Specifically, how do you see technology changing the culture of the way the district operates, teaches, and interacts? What effects do you expect to see as a result of those changes?
I received an email last night from a parent from Chaparral, completely unrelated to this forum, and I wanted to read that. Mrs. Yoles has been exceptionally instrumental at implementing technology and its numerous benefits within the classroom and beyond. She even utilizes Skype within the classroom to generate and maintain global connections between her students, families, educators, and those of other countries. Mrs. Yoles always keeps the parents connected to the classroom via blog posts that display photos and captions of what occurred during their school day. She has been monumental in Chloe's flourishing interest, passion, and active participation in technology advances, as well as mine. To me, this is proof that technology is changing our culture and is happening right now in our schools.
Ray.
I think technology has the potential to completely change the way our teachers teach and the way our children learn, as well as the way teachers, parents, and students interact. Already, parents have become closer to the classroom through email, teacher websites, and Aries. Those party sign-up forms that used to be taped to classroom windows have been replaced by signup genius, while elementary students know that good behavior will earn them points on ClassDojo instead of a star by their name on the board. This generation of technology natives expects to use technology to learn and responds well to the many tools available to aid educators in teaching them. As we've expanded Wi-Fi through our campuses and given students greater access to smartboards, computers, iPads, and their own devices, they are becoming more savvy at using alternate research methods and learning about events from primary, real-time sources. These skills will be critical to their success. Looking to the future of education in our district, technology must be an inherent part of the way we teach and interact, so embedded in our delivery of education to students that they hardly even notice it.
Thank you. Leslie.
In the past four years, I have seen an increased role in technology, and I will continue, or we all will continue to see, an increase in technology throughout the entire district. We have seen and continue to see an increase in use of data to inform and drive instruction to close the achievement gap, tools for more individualized, differentiated, and engaged learning. The new standardized tests will be administered on tech devices. Now that the district has completed the installation of Wi-Fi and has a stable infrastructure, the district can focus on implementing the other aspects of the strategic plan. Next steps include a district-wide platform or management system, which will allow all stakeholders to obtain information. These are tremendous time-saving opportunities if questions can be answered on the website instead of over an email or a phone call. As a collaboration tool, the management system will support Common Core as teachers can share lessons and strategies from other educators locally and nationally.
Thank you. Dallas.
Without a doubt, technology has and will continue to revolutionize how we teach and how our students learn. It is one of the reasons why, it's one of the three core reasons that I am running, and that is to bring a strategic integrated technology program to our district. Four years ago, our district undertook a strategic technology assessment. I have it here, all 170 pages of it. I would encourage you to read it. It's a great evening read. And what it laid out for us was a series of strategic recommendations for how the board should move forward and move our district into the 21st century. We have done a good job on tackling a number of the tactical components of the program, but until last month, four years after the program was developed, we did not tackle the core part of this program, which is developing a strategic integration program that weaves technology into our curriculum, into our teacher training, into how our students learn. As one of the former heads of one of the largest digital agencies in the world and helped build that agency, I look forward to playing an active role as our district moves forward in this technology area, implements the recommendations of this program, and brings a strategic perspective to technology.
Thank you. Angela.
Thank you. I expect it to change everything when it's embraced and integrated and as we move down that road. We've done a number of things on that technology strategy. We've restructured our media centers. We've got our house in order. We've set up our Wi-Fi system, as Leslie said. And now we are going to work on creating a strategic platform where teachers can share information and kids can get the tools they need. But let's remember what technology is. In and of itself, it is not the answer to anything. It is merely a tool. I have used this example before. I have a brother who teaches high school in a high school very much like Agoura, Calabasas. He has a terrific program, an award-winning program. He has 400 students that want to take his program every year. He has the last chalkboard in the district. He can use all the other things, but he also uses the chalkboard. So we need to look at what's going on there. How do we not burden these teachers? How do we seamlessly allow them to adopt it so that they can use best practices?
Next question is a 67th question, and the first person up is Ray. The question is, given this continuing budget crisis and the new way the state provides funding, what do you see as the prospects for the budget and what specific things would you like to do to address the budget shortfalls?
After the passage of Prop 30, our district has received additional funding, but there is no doubt that all districts will no longer be funded equally in the future. The new local control funding formula means that funding is now targeted to other districts where needs are greater, especially focusing on low-income populations. Once the new funding formula is fully implemented, LVUSD is projected to receive 38% less per student than the top-funded district in LA County. Additionally, our existing parcel tax expires in June 2016, and if that is not renewed, we could lose an additional $2.3 million in local funding. The new Board of Education will have to be focused on changes to how we deliver education based on new Common Core standards, as well as the new funding formula from the state, along with decreasing revenue from the federal government. In short, it is no longer business as usual, and the board must lead and be proactive in managing expenses. I will be an independent, fiscally responsible board member who will ask the tough questions. I am also uniquely positioned to work on alternative funding ideas with the foundation and our business community to ensure that our district creates and enhances our public-private partnerships.
Thank you. Leslie.
Oh, thank you. Historically, California school districts have weathered fluctuations in funding. Funding is dynamic and fluid. Budgets are adopted and revised multiple times during a school year with new information. Yes, we have challenges, and this board, in my opinion, has been fiscally responsible. The budget shortfalls have been challenges the board and district have been aggressively addressing. Through cuts in funding, the district may manage to reduce expenses by restructuring and streamlining many operations at the district office and its school site. Challenges of budget times and cuts are opportunities to look at things and ask the questions in new and different ways. This board has done that. My leadership contributed to spearheading the formation of the foundation because I have always believed that this community would support a foundation, and we could tap donors locally, parents, and business, together with knowledge counts, a new summer school provider...
Dallas.
The fundamental reality we all have to embrace is that despite all these cuts, we're operating a $2 million deficit, and within five years, we will wipe out our entire reserves. This is not a crisis environment. This is a funding reality that we all need to embrace. As long as California remains 49th in per-people funding, the government is not going to give us the funds that we require to have the education system we believe our community deserves. This is why I have laid out a very clear program for how we grow funding and address student attrition rates, the lifeblood of our community. I'm a former fundraiser, and I run a $20 million education foundation. I know how to raise funds. The foundation is a great start. What is it need from this board? Aggressive air cover and a campaign top-to-top that brings together city leaders and planning leaders to reach out to our business community and make clear that we have an expectation of our businesses, that when you operate in our community, you will support our educational environments. I know that some snicker at this, but let me tell you, it can be done. The Manhattan Beach Education Foundation raised $5 million last year for their schools, twice our deficit and 15 times more than our current foundation raises, working together with a clear focus we can solve this problem.
Thank you. Angela.
For as long as I can remember, we've been in a budget crisis. We are required to project out, even without knowing where the state will be, excuse me, which is why we make adjustments constantly to the budget. We need to continue to push the state for our fair share. We need to continue to push the state for stable education funding, and we need to look at ways we can solve it on the revenue side. It's always been a challenge. We have adapted through terrible times, and I think we will again. I think it's one of the reasons our two associations have been very patient and trust us, because we've continued to have a budget that prioritizes our fund in a way that makes sense for everyone. We want to operate as efficiently as we can. We are raising funds. We do have a culture of giving. Our PFAs, through the generosity of our parents, bring in 2.2 million a year. Our foundation is working hard now. They're working with those other foundations as a model to learn and grow from them and to adapt ways that those ideas can be applicable to LVUSD and our specific needs. We are getting there. They're on the verge of tremendous growth, and I think we've been very supportive.
Thank you. Mary Jo.
California has been in a budget crisis since the '70s, beginning with Serrano Priest and Prop 13. Since then, budgeting for our schools has been perilous. For those of us who have worked in the district for many years, we have seen so many budget changes come down from the state. It is not so much a crisis as the latest new reality. The same is true with this new funding formula. Who knows what it will look like when it is finally implemented? We have weathered other realities. We will weather this one. Of course, we as a community need to step up to close the funding gap from our state and from declining enrollment. We do that by cutting expenses and raising revenues. We know how to raise revenues. We know how, we need to kick it to the next level. Our knowledge, whoops, out of time.
Okay, that was the last one of that one. How are you doing on tape? You good? 62nd question. First person is Leslie. Some people have a concern that LVUSD is losing students to both Conejo and Oak Park School Districts, as well as private schools. Do you think this is an issue? If so, what would you like to do about it? And how do you feel about allowing out-of-district students into the district on permits?
We live in a time of choice. Parents are looking for that program or that school that meets the needs of their child and family. We lose and gain students from neighboring districts and private schools. Permits and attrition is something this board and district monitors regularly. People choose to send their children to schools for all different types of reasons. Some may be religious, some may be sports, and we attract many out-of-district students who are looking for a program that we offer. Permits help offset declining enrollment. Oak Park Unified School District is running at 49% of their students on permit. Lost Virginus is close to 12%. Our goal is to find a balance. The board and district is sensitive to finding a balance between the needs of our community, our schools, and our district.
Dallas.
Addressing attrition is one of the core issues of my budget plan. Attrition and student enrollment is the lifeblood of our district. Some clear facts and I think budget reality for all of us. Our enrollment's down 10% over the last eight years. It's impacted us by about $4 million in the bottom line for this district. This year alone, about 200 students in this district chose to go to another public school district outside of Lost Virginus. It's about $1.7 million in funds that walked out the front door of this school. We don't know why. We don't poll these parents. We don't judge and ask, and ask, why are they going to other schools? What are the program offerings we could have to compete? And that is a key word for us, my friends. We are competing for the lifeblood of a school district, and that is the enrollment numbers these students provide. So addressing attrition will be one of the core issues I run on. It's one of the core things I will tackle once I get on this board, with a plan to understand why these students are leaving and what type of programs we can put on the table, from extracurricular to sports to curricular activities that can help make us and continue to have us be one of the best school districts that both attract but also keep our current students in the district.
Angela.
I'm going to tell you that attrition isn't a problem. I'm going to tell you the numbers are that permits out versus permits in mean that we net 800 kids in this district. Yes, we have declining enrollment. That's a change in demographics. My street used to be full of kids who were all going to school. Now those kids are at college or grown up, but all those people are still there. People leave our district for very valid reasons, for employment, for religious schools. They have that choice. I'm here to tell you we're full at Agoura High School. I do tours every spring where we have private school people, people from out of the district. Those tours are packed, and I know that one of my counterparts from Calabasas High School who does those tours would say the same thing. They bring in funding. They allow us to balance when we take permitted kids in. So I'm going to tell you, this isn't a problem. There will always be students who need to leave for various reasons, but in the end, it's a wash.
Mary Jo.
We do lose some permits to other districts, but we also gain students from our neighboring districts and even from private schools. We need to offer options and new programs that students want to take to maintain and attract students to keep our enrollment stable. We use permits to fill in and balance classes and programs. We need to fill classes if we want to continue to offer a wide variety of programs to our students. Our permit families are very grateful to be a part of our district. They are generous with both time and money. When I was PFC president, many, many people on my executive board were permitted families. I think the perils of permits are greatly exaggerated, and we, as a district, have not taken in an excessive amount.
Ray.
Angela is right about demographics. For example, in Westlake Village, 10 years ago, 40% of our households had school-aged children. Today, that number is only 27%. However, anytime someone chooses to leave LVUSD, I believe it is an issue. What is it that another district is offering that we are not? Have we done something that makes it more attractive to leave? I have heard from some who have said they left for a smaller district, smaller class size that a private school can offer, competitive sports that a private middle school can offer, influence of friends who have left, and religious reasons. Much of these are personal choice that we cannot overcome. However, the question that needs... However, the question that needs to be asked is, are we resting on our laurels, or are we continuing to be a strong educational leader? Whether it is our students, our teachers, our chief technology officer, we need to find reasons for people to stay and question ourselves when they leave. On the other hand, are our permit families? They are coming from somewhere else to our destination district, and we are lucky to have them as part of our community. Permit families bring the district additional revenue for programs that we might otherwise be unable to provide, and their presence helps all of our students.
Thank you. Next question is a 62nd question. Dallas is the first one up. If you guys can go quickly and do it a little bit faster, we can squeeze one more question in after this. Talk to us about your view on the funding of special education in our district. Do you see problems, changes, improvements?
This is an area I am very passionate about, and I think it's one where our district's approach to supporting special education needs, while not perfect, should be a great source of pride for our community. As I walk door-to-door in our community, this issue came up more than any other issue when I talked to parents, and there are passionate advocates on every side. Last week, I was walking in Westlake Village and spoke to a former naval officer, and he and his wife had adopted a child who needed special education needs. You could hear the passion in his voice when he talked about the struggles and challenges they went through to ensure their child received the quality education they deserve. And it's also a cautionary tale and a reminder to us that in 60 seconds, we are not going to address this issue in this forum today. But what I will tell you as a Board member, this is one of those issues that belongs with the Board, to ensure that we have listened to the community, that we have set standards, and more importantly, that we're not just meeting the legal guidelines, but that we are exceeding them and meeting the moral obligation to provide every child, regardless of race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, or educational ability, the world-class education they deserve. This is a great pride, a sense of pride for this district.
Angela?
We do a great job with our special ed students. The problem is not with special ed and never has been. The problem is with special ed funding. We are continually given mandates by the state government, but especially by the federal government, of things that we have to meet, and then we're not funded for those things. We need to continue to work with other districts to demand that we get what we're given, what we deserve for those mandates. I wish it had been included as a factor in LCFF in returning money to the districts. It's difficult, but we do a great job with these students. But we're largely handcuffed because we're not given the money to the programs that we're required to have.
Mary Jo?
I, like Angela, would love to see our special ed program fully funded. But since that will not happen in any time in the near future, it is a challenge for our district. We have a large special ed population because we do a good job of serving our students. In the last few years, our district has worked diligently to improve and streamline our special ed program to keep costs in check. This is something I would encourage if on the Board. I must mention that I have worked with amazing special ed teachers at AE Wright. Vicki Willig is an incredible teacher and an advocate for her students and for her whole department. When the distinguished school team visited our school last spring, they asked that her program be a model for the entire state. I am proud of the services our special ed department strives to provide for their students.
Ray?
Not only is funding special education critical to our mission of addressing the needs of a broad population of learners, it is also a mandate that we cannot ignore. It's true that our special education costs remain high while our funding has decreased significantly. While we no longer face the huge expenses associated with lawsuits in this area like we used to, thanks to great improvements in our program, we are still contributing $10 million for our unrestricted general fund to meet our mandate. As for the future, we need to continue to meet this mandate, provide an education for all, and ensure that we never take our eye off the expenses that go into special education so that we can best manage our resources, saving money where we can to maintain and improve programs most critical to student learning. All the while, we cannot stop looking for additional sources of funding to offset these mandated expenses.
Leslie?
As you've heard, yes, we have modeled special ed programs, and these are federal mandates that are not fully funded, as many mandates are not. Programs have been developed, redesigned, and streamlined to meet the needs of all of our students, including our special ed students. The district has reduced costs over the past few years, keeping our eye on the budget, asking the tough questions. We have restructured and streamlined. The district strives to contain costs while still providing quality special education programs.
We are running quickly out of time, so I'm going to tell you, the audience, that there are a few more questions that these people have prepared for, and I'm going to encourage you to ask them afterwards so that we can wrap things up in a reasonable amount of time. One of the topics is about the constant pressure to push up the calendar. Some people believe that the calendar dates are always at odds between the elementary level and the high school level, and I encourage you to ask candidates about that and what their answers are on that. Another question is about, actually, it was a question submitted by the students, and frankly, I'm just going to read it, and then you can talk to the candidates afterwards. Most students and many parents will agree that there is too much homework. Although homework is beneficial, a study by Duke University proved that it is only good to a certain point, after which it becomes counterproductive. I love the fact that the students looked this up to figure this out. What most students get on an average night in LVUSD is way over the limit suggested by not only Duke's research, but the district's guidelines. What would you do if elected to help fix this problem? Don't answer it. Just, these are things that people come ask you afterwards. And then, lastly, the, today's students are clearly more comfortable with technology than their parents and many teachers. How would you propose to reduce that gap? With that, we're going to move to closing statements. Each one of the candidates chose a second number, and it was a random ordering again now for the closing statements. The first candidate up is actually Dallas. This is a two-minute question, and Dallas?
Thank you, and thank you for listening to us today. I think I'd like to start with the beginning, why I decided to run for the school Board. This was about four months ago, and I was attending a The Foundation meeting and saw the commitment of our teachers, of our parents, and of our administration to tackle some systemic budget needs facing our district. And then I saw the very real likelihood that after this election next year, there wouldn't be one current parent of a district student serving on our school Board. Both of those reasons really instilled me to put my name forward on behalf of my two daughters, who have their educational journey ahead of them in this district, but also on behalf of ensuring a diverse point of view and a plan to tackle our crippling budget deficit that's hitting this district, the technology needs that we have that are systemic, and really addressing the teacher funding issues that we've talked about today. I am grateful for every opportunity that this community has given us. We are not lifelong, 35- or 40-year community residents. We are new families. We moved here several years ago, like many families, who came for the amazing educational opportunities. I put my name forward because we have skin in the game, as I've said, and that skin, their name is Emma and Abby, my special interest, the reason why I'm running, and the reason why I hope you'll take a consideration for my campaign. On my website, dallaslawrence.com, I've laid out all the issues that we've talked about here today: a plan to cut our district's budget deficit and grow revenues; a plan to implement a strategic district-wide technology integration program that goes beyond Wi-Fi classrooms and, you know, technology devices, and actually gets to the core of what we have to offer; and importantly, a plan to address our core teacher funding shortfall. We didn't get a chance to talk about that much today, but folks, you need to realize, our teacher starting salary is $47,000 a year. The average teacher makes $68,000 per year. Only 1/3 of our teachers can afford to live in this district. We are paying 25% less than some other districts. This is going to become a systemic issue for us in the future. I'd be honored to have your consideration and honored to have your support on November 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray is up next.
Thank you all very much for attending tonight and listening to our visions for the school district. I am an optimist who believes that the best days of our district are ahead of us, not behind us, and that together, we can ensure our district never gets stuck in neutral, but keeps moving forward in an aggressive manner that allows us to maintain our position as a destination district. I hope you'll remember a few key things about me. Next year, I will have a daughter in high school and two sons, one in elementary and one in middle school. We cannot afford to lose the current LVUSD parent voice on our school Board. I have the right work background as a nonprofit executive director and familiarity with Sacramento to bring something different and needed to our Board. I believe in hard work, transparency, and collaboration, and I will prioritize serving our community as I have for years. I want to ensure that our district is never in the management mindset and spends each day with a leadership mindset. We must be open, honest, transparent, and never allow ourselves to be viewed as demanding or difficult. We can't just go with our hand out to others if we haven't spent the time nurturing collaborative relationships with our teachers, our families, our business leaders, and our fellow elected officials. In my professional life, I used to try to work with somebody at a similar organization who viewed collaboration this way: as long as I do what, as long as you're doing what I want, we're collaborating. That can never be the LVUSD way. I am proud of the state officials, county officials, and local officials who trust my leadership and have endorsed my campaign. I am proud of the individual teachers who know me and believe in me. Most of all, I am extremely proud of those community members who see themselves in me and have chosen to support my candidacy. In order to be successful on the school boards, you need to know what you're being asked to lead. For example, you need to understand that successful education foundations, like Manhattan Beach, are funded 80% by parents and only 20% by business. You must understand our community, our culture, our strengths, and not only focus on perceived weaknesses. I am a successful leader who promises to be a strong advocate for our children, our teachers, and our community. I would be honored to have your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela?
Thank you. I have work experience and training that's highly relevant to the skills I can bring to the Board, but what's really important here is my long experience and deep roots in the community, which gives me a good understanding of how our district works and the inside knowledge of the people and relationships involved. The role of the Board is to set policy and articulate that vision of the community to our district. I'll be able to do so by understanding thoroughly each site and the people there. When I meet a kid, I want to know, how are their classes going? How do their parents perceive those classes? I want to take that knowledge and combine it with best practices to help that kid get the best education possible. I know this district. I know where the construction crews have had snags at various work projects. I know where the high school kids hang out on campus and when they prefer to take the ACT versus the SAT. I know which teacher has a chinchilla. I know which principal likes to dress up as a Disney princess. I know because I've been there. So, when I go to work on policy, it's with the knowledge of all the big and small things in our district so that I don't get in the way of that, so they're allowed to bloom and grow. I'd especially like to emphasize the importance of having secondary experience. Most of you know, when your kid gets to high school, the whole game changes. It all becomes about, how have we prepared these kids for their next path? What are the choices they are making? How do we help them? This is where their future starts to take shape, our investment in them, how it's turning out. And when I have no more kids in the district, I will then be able to spend more time as an engaged Board member. I think my record speaks for itself. I spent eight years on long building projects, knowing the entire time my kids would never attend those schools. You don't do these things because you have kids in the school. You do them because they're right. That's how you're invested. There's a Greek proverb that says, "Civilizations flourish when we plant trees under which we ourselves will not sit." I'd like to think that I've proven my trust, and I'd like to serve as a Board member. Thank you.
Mary Jo?
After listening to the candidates, you have heard that we agree on many of the issues and goals for our school district. So, what is it that sets me apart? I am the only candidate that has been a parent, a longtime volunteer, and an employee of the district. I have worked alongside staff for the past nine years proudly. I understand what happens daily at a school site. I have built the relationships necessary to work together with all the stakeholders of our school district. I have the experience, the relationships, and I have earned trust and respect. Change is on the horizon. Change requires trusted leaders. I understand the values of our school district and community because I've been an integral part of it, and I know how to get things done. I will be a full-time Board member. That does not mean that I will be at the district office full-time. It means I will be available and accessible to students, staff, and our community. Most importantly, I have learned so much from working with our students every day. It is the students I will champion if I am elected to the Board. It would be my privilege to serve on our school Board. I ask for your vote on November 5, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Leslie?
Los Virginas did not need a mandate to recognize the need to teach our students the necessary skills to be prepared for college and careers. Our students are already being taught to think critically, solve problems, be creative, and collaborate. These are the skills that are the focus of Common Core. Los Virginas has been preparing for the new standards for the past couple of years. Principals, teachers, district leaders, and Board members have attended many conferences and trainings. Los Virginas, being in the top 2% of districts in California, is well poised for continued success. I am proud of my record in service. When I first ran for school Board in 2009, the economy was in the midst of the Great Recession. As a result, the district was facing deep budget cuts and unparalleled layoffs. This difficult time required action from leaders who were trusted members of the community. My participation on the school Board contributed to encouraging and supporting efforts to restructure the district for efficiencies to help offset the cuts. Relationships with city leaders, public agencies, the community at large, as well as the Foundation, allowed us to expand partnerships and increase revenues on behalf of our students. Trusted relationships and experienced leadership is essential to fostering the climate to allow for embracing further innovation. My priority has always been on maximizing options and opportunities to meet the needs of our students. You've heard many programs tonight. It's all about attracting students to move here and be innovative. As a Board member, I will continue to be accessible, advocate for students and public education, monitor student learning with a focus on increasing achievement, and oversee and prioritize a complex budget. Thank you.
That concludes tonight's debate. Just a couple more comments in here. Through the efforts of the City of Calabasas, the debate will be available on the web in the days to come. We'll announce that through the Westlake Revelations email list, so if you are not subscribed, go to westlakerevelations.com and sign up, or look at the Westlake Revelations site, or look at the City of Calabasas site, and if there's additional ways to view it, we'll let you know that as well. We want to thank our candidates tonight, and again, the district for hosting us, and the City of Calabasas for the video, and Abby's Mill House Bakery for providing tonight's refreshments, as well as everyone that made tonight possible. How about a round of applause here for these five candidates, though?